Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the March 18th Commissioner Briefing Meeting. Thanks for joining us this afternoon. Commissioners, are there any questions or items to discuss for this evening's 5:00 PM agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move to staff updates. I have been asked if we can move FCC to our first item, and Dane Peterson is joining us to give an update. How are you doing?
Hey, Edwards, Commissioners, hi. Good afternoon, hope everybody's doing well. It's been approximately a month since this board heard an update on FCC operations and how things are going with the residential waste and recycle collections contracts. So here today to help do that is Louis Knight, John Addison, John Connerton of FCC. And I'll turn over the presentation to Louis Knight, who's the General Manager for Buncombe Area. Louis?
Thank you, Commissioner, for having us back. We'll go ahead and jump straight into the slide here. All right, first thing is our carts. Basically, December 2nd, 2024, these are the carts we have on hand. 587, 96 solid waste carts, 38, 64 gallon carts, and 48 gallon carts. The bear carts should be here 26th of this month. That's the date they gave us, between now and the 26th, so as soon as they get there, we'll have them put out as well. We have 194 recycling 96 gallon carts, 179 48 gallon recycling carts, and 101 64 gallon recycling carts. This is our collection percentages. As you can see, each day this past week, when we presented this slide, we've been at 100% completion of our routes. We've had 511 missed pickups. On this slide right here, if you see the pink is the most improved. This slide is kind of cut off, but our division is the most improved. Far as FCC company-wide, we're at a 0.7% increase over last month. Route collection percentages, as you can see in January, we're at 96.15, 98.3% in February. And now we're at 99.12% over the last time we had this meeting. So we're trending in the right direction. Call center update. These are the actual calls taken. We're at 100% call success rate. No calls are being missed. Everything is being answered and directed to the right regions that it needs to go to, far as carts, billing questions, missed pickups, so forth, so on. Breakdown over here of our calls. As the 497 calls were taken, 42% of them is cart questions, 32% billing questions. And then the small areas is the missed pickups. And the missed trash and missed recycling. We have, I will tell you on the missed carts or the cart deliveries, we have hired a third party to get that back on track to cut those calls down. They actually started over their process today. We had like a thousand work orders. It was actually trendier or quicker for us to do that method than to have our own guys distribute. They have two, four, four crews to deliver for the next week, every day, delivering carts only. This is our missed pickup service resolution process, the method which we do it, how it's analyzed, how it comes back to our dispatch. We just create the work order for it, for the route managers and the crew, to address it, to get it picked up, make sure it is actually a customer in our service, make sure it's being routed to the right truck. And then once it's serviced, gets back in that it's been taken care of, we can pull it up at our RSV system to verify that it has been serviced. If it has been a frequent missed stop, route managers go out to address what the reason is, whether it's the wrong truck, meaning that it's addressed to a big truck, and it should be on a small because it's on a small road or a backdoor premium stop. We can change it in our routing system and deter it from being a frequent missed stop moving forward. Community outreach. FCC attended all four of the recovery resource events. I think like we had 60 something total people attend our table while we were there. I would say 80% of it was good. We had some people that needed carts, some people did have service issues. We were taking care of those. We also hosted the Evergreen Charter School Career Day back last week of February. Kids had a great time enjoying the truck and the show. I'm open for any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Horton.
On page six, it says unique calls. What do you mean by that?
Is it up there? Okay, go ahead. What was the question, I'm sorry?
The unique calls. That's not page six.
You're talking about on the graph where it said?
Right here.
It's just dictating it may not be a billing question or a service question. It might be somebody asking if they could get service for a certain development or whatever, or if it's something we can service. Those type of questions. It's nothing that we actually have missed or needs a cart or anything like that.
Okay. I was just making sure it wasn't tell, what are they called, those people that's calling for loans and stuff like we get?
No, 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 ma'am.
Thank you so much for the hard work.
No problem, no problem.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, we're excited to s-
Sorry. Sorry. Thanks for being here with us today. Quick question on route collection percentage. Can you describe what that means? Because it's 100%, but then below that, you've got missed pickups and then 99.12%. So what does the 100% represent on route collection?
The difference is, is that our routes are routed, our drivers go out and run them, and they validate that we are 100% completing their routes. So off of our map and our GPS, they did 100% run all their roads, service all the houses. A missed pickup isn't verified until later off the RSV system, whether the customer set out behind us, whether it was actual missed stop, whether it was routed wrong. Those type of things do not affect the actual percentage of whether the route was completed. It's just a different percentage of, we're running a 99.12% of picking up every one in the county.
Got it. And then, so you've got an RSV system to pick up if it's a missed route. Are you all tabulating the outreach that the County Commission is receiving into your totals as well? Is that coordinated?
Yeah, so anytime escalation comes in from you guys, first thing we do is validate whether it was set out using our Third Eye system, whether we did run it, and move forward with that to make sure it goes on the hot stop list or to verify the customer needs to have it out by 7:00 AM, whichever direction we need to go with it. I will say, since the last time we were here, we were, I think, 14 calls a day, or escalations a day. I think we're like three and a half escalations through the county now. The calls went way down.
Yeah, we've noticed that.
Just implementing the system as I spoke, everybody doing their part to close the circle. When a call first comes in to where we validate at the very end, it's really working.
Great.
And we're also starting to see some customers who have had concerns with billing. They've been addressed very promptly, and they're coming back to us to take note of how well and quickly those have been addressed. So we do appreciate that conscientious, conscientious care to those customers.
Thank you, we work really hard to get there.
Did you have a question?
Grateful for it. Dane, this is actually a you question, so we can end on you if you like. Anything that we're expecting in terms of uptick or change in service? Or are we, knock on wood, but safe to say we're in a little bit of a good transition period where we're supposed to be this time in the contract?
Well, these guys know zero is how many missed stops. That's the goal, right?
Always.
That's what we're working towards. We know that things happen every day with collections. There's a lot of things that work against it, traffic, weather, personnel, equipment, those type of things. So I think we're all seeing dramatic improvements since when the contract starts. I still think there's more room for improvement. We saw some situations the past couple of weeks where there's been repeat misses that we've seen before. So those are things that we're having conversations weekly in our meetings that has to get buttoned up. I trust the process that they're implementing, that it will get addressed. But I still, I still want to see that improvement continue. Now, as we all know, with our furry friends, the bears are going to start getting more active. So this thing has to be buttoned up because that turns into more problems, more issues for the bears, more issues for the residents. So that's a focus, is that these things are well under control moving into bear season. So, but I don't, I don't anticipate anything that I can say specifically, Commissioner, to your question.
Thank you.
And Dane, real quick, if folks are still missing pickups, if they've got issues, how do you recommend that residents elevate that so we can address it?
Absolutely. Please reach out to Buncombe County Solid Waste. We want to hear about that. However, that gets channeled. I know some folks have elected to reach out to y'all. That's great. Provide that to us, and we'll make sure that's expedited and those are getting addressed. But please reach out to Buncombe County Solid Waste.
Thank y'all so much.
All right, and Sarah is still responding to emails that come directly to all seven of us, keeping Dane in the loop, and you all are doing a great job of following up very quickly with those residents. We appreciate it. All right, thank y'all so much. Have a great evening. We appreciate it. All right, we're going to move into our Halleen update. And it looks by Dane being there that he is on deck first to talk about debris removal.
I didn't have to go very far.
Didn't have to go far.
Well, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. We, my portion of the presentation today is to provide, or attempt to provide, an update on debris removal operations in the county. So those will be those folks presenting today. And so first scope that we're talking about is right-of-way debris removal. So right-of-ways continuing the, when I say deadlines on this, FEMA stipulated deadlines, that's what I'm talking about when we mentioned the March 31st deadline. And that is for final pass for the Corps of Engineers contractor Ashbrit to complete right-of-way debris for the, for the final pass. So that's the, that's the timeframe we're looking at, approximately 13 days away now. Over 1.1 million cubic yards of debris has been removed from the right-of-way, and we're talking about specifically City of Asheville, Black Mountain, and unincorporated areas of Buncombe County, including some of the largest trees and stumps that has ever been seen in a disaster. So unfortunate, a lot of large mature trees have, you know, have been taken through the storm. But that also takes a lot of dedicated specialized equipment to bust them up, get them moved, and get them safely managed. Still on the right-of-way topic, so the debris subcontract, if y'all recall, there were nine zones that split up the county originally that Ashbrit had designated. And these have been set up or subdivided further to 38 smaller zones. And the, basically, the process now is with final pass, Ashbrit is notifying us as they're making the final pass in a given zone. They're letting us know that, for instance, like for Zone A1, which you see is the further western part of the county there, if you think about Alexander area. So they notify us that, hey, final pass has been made. And on the county side, we actually have an assessment team that goes out and gets in these zones, rides the roads, inspects the right-of-ways, and makes sure that as far as visibility, what we see, that the debris has been, has been removed. So that, that act, and if debris is found, we have GPS tools that we're pinpointing that, locating that, providing an address back to Ashbrit so that they can go and recover those areas that we've identified. And at that point, once that's verified, then that zone is closed out. To date, A1 is the only zone that's been closed. Ashbrit has notified us of at least 11 or 12 more zones that they feel like has, final pass has occurred in. We've rode those, and we've identified debris, and in some cases, substantial debris still on the right-of-way. So their forces are working through our feedback, our assessment, that our teams have gone out and identified. So that's how this process is going to go. You see that it's shaded a little bit different on the map. That's how that'll be designated color-wise on these maps moving forward. Private property debris removal scope. So PPDR continues. And when we talk about the FEMA expedited target date, that is through June 30th, is when that work, that mission is set to be completed. We're going to keep pushing this message every chance we get. April 15th is the deadline for residents to sign up for private property debris removal. We're going to push that. Please call our call center. That's 828-250-6100. Hit 2 for debris. BuncombeCounty.org. We also have a tie-in with the DRC Disaster Recovery Center, where Tetra Tech has an in-person intake center. Right now, that's still currently at Fairview Library. So please, sign up for this PPDR. And April 15th is the deadline for this. So far, we've received 4,054 applications as of March 17th. That number is, is popping. It is increasing very much every single day. So we're encouraged to see that, and we want to see that continue to go, go up. And as far as progress-wise in the field, Ashbrit has 44 crews that are working the parcel and the PPDR actual debris fieldwork removal. And a little over 1,000 properties has been completed thus far. Demolition, which is also tied to the PPDR application and right-of-entry process. The demolition is requested by residents and local businesses. That process will begin soon. So far, 289 demolition requests have come through as of March 17th. And of those, let's see, of those 289 demolition requests through PPDR, 32 of those are commercial demolition requests that have been, that have been asked for the, by the property owner. And when we, you can see the picture to the right, that's actually a local business. It's in the Beacon Village area that has requested PPDR and has went through the process, and they will be getting that structure demolished through this program.
Sorry, Dane, did you say 39 were hazardous or?
No, I'm sorry, if I said hazardous, I didn't mean to. 32 are, out of the 289 demo requests, 32 of those are commercial applications.
Oh, so the rest are industrial or?
Residential.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
And it's, I guess a follow-up would be that 289, does that, does that number seem like where we want it to be? Is it too low, too?
It's interesting. I don't really know how to proportion that. You would think with all the devs, there would be a higher number. Now, there's been a lot of targeted outreach to folks, especially in heavily impacted areas, you know, asking, you know, face-to-face, making sure people are aware of the option for this program. And some folks have, we see the number, but a lot of folks have used different methods to handle the demolition on their property, whether it be insurance or taken into their own hands. So I could see that number coinciding with the regular PPDR program as we move forward to the April 15th date. Because we want to make sure we're messaging that as well. Small business is eligible if that structure was damaged due to storm, storm-related damage, then it's eligible for this project. And when we talk about small business, small commercial, you know, the eligibility criteria for FEMA, like Walmarts, Lowe's, the big box stores, that's not eligible for this program. But our local, small businesses, that is, that is certainly eligible.
And to take advantage of it doesn't necessarily mean that the homeowner or the landowner has a plan for the future for that property, right? It's just, it's just all about the demolition itself.
Absolutely, yeah. Very targeted, as far as demolition of the structure. Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you for that. So PPDR and commercial property debris removal and demolitions are open for application again through April 15th. And asbestos management process has been approved by all parties involved. Just wanted to make sure we highlighted that. That's been a focus for our group in collaboration with FEMA, the Corps, and EPA Region 4 as well. So there's comfort level on all levels on how asbestos is going to be handled through this process. And I think that's, that's going to align with best management practices to make sure this material is handled safely. Waterway debris removal. So again, FEMA stipulated target date for completion, substantial completion of the waterway debris mission is June 1st. Work is ongoing, and it's, it's going at a, at a very rapid pace. Over 360,000 cubic yards have been removed from the waterways to date. Crews are currently removing debris from Beechtree Creek, Kane Creek, French Broad, Ivy, and the Swanano River, as well as some other feeding tributaries throughout the county. 50 crews are in the water currently right now with over 125 removal pieces of equipment. So there's a, there's a sizable force out there in the waters currently. Some more pictures. You can see the toll, the wooden armored area where they offload and unload into the stream areas. Clicker's not working. The last scope is titled property. So nine vehicles have been towed to date through the title property. There we go, thank you. I'm sorry, 11 vehicles have been towed from this program so far. And actually, two owners have claimed their title property through this process. So that was a, that was a good news note. This will continue, obviously, as waterway missions and private property debris missions expand and continue. There'll be coordination from our teams on the title property to getting those title property materials removed appropriately. And a reminder on that is that title property on private property is only eligible for tow if it is not owned by the private property owner. So we just want to make sure that's clear that through this program, FEMA eligibility, if the, at my house, if it's my vehicle, that's not eligible for, for this program. So we want to make sure folks that understand that. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
First of all, I just want to say thank you. I'm hearing from the community how appreciative they are of just seeing all this debris picked up in the waterways and everything. And it is, it's lifting people's spirits, definitely. So thanks for all the hard work on that. And it was helpful to see the map and hear the process. I'm curious, do you think, that March 31st date, do you, do you think we'll be able to get all the right-of-way? Partly what I see sometimes is people are putting more in the right-of-way. So they've put it there, they've come in, taken it away. And, and so I'm, I'm not sure if they're, if they're completely getting the message that this is going to be the last pass. I'm kind of wondering, are they going to keep putting in the right-of-way because that's what's in their minds? And have you, kind of, what are your thoughts around that?
Yeah, one of the main messages that we want to try to convey is sign up for private property debris removal, right? Because March 1st was the deadline to get debris out to the right-of-way so it's collected by this deadline of March 31st. And I know that's happening, Commissioner, to your point. So we want to make sure that, hey, when in doubt, if you've still got debris on your private property and it's storm-related, please sign up for private property debris removal. That mission is ongoing through June 30th. Now, the application deadline's April 15th. But that's, that's the avenue to get your material picked up. Because we're asking residents, you know, don't, don't put your debris back out to right-of-way now because those missions are moving forward with final pass. So that's, that's the message we're trying to put out there.
Okay, that's helpful. So just focus people on the private property. They need to sign up, even if they have it kind of in the front of their yard. They should just go ahead and sign up for the private property at this point.
And I think too, please call the call center.
Okay.
250-6100. If you, if, if folks still have visible debris in the right-of, we want to know about that. So let us know, hit 2 for debris at that number. And that's, that's a way we can track that and get that information out to Ashbrit. But that's the key. Sign up for PPDR. Don't put the material to the right-of-way now. Let, let final pass go through. Sign up for PPDR, and that's the message we're trying to put through.
And that's regardless if they're in a city or not, right? Like?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, the city of Asheville is included in that scope.
Mission with Corps.
Yes, sir.
And one thing I saw, I think it was a video, and it was, it wasn't trees that had just fallen down. It was also trees that were storm damaged. Is that correct, that they are also doing that? Like if there was, were trees that were no longer safe, even if they were not laying on the ground that they were coming in and?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am, that's, that's, that's a line item within the contract. Leaners, hangers, and hazardous trees, 100%. Those are, those are target areas where if it's an unsafe condition that was created by the storm, that is within the scope to be addressed within the contract, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
And remember, when the city of Asheville, they give us that calendar, the first of the year. And once this is over, they'll go back to the regular picking up debris. They have the days that, when they pick it up, you know, refrigerators or anything like that. They do it, you know, automatically.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, and there's also a focus that we're having conversations with Land and Ag, our partners, as well as making a request to FEMA to provide some more emergency water protections. So slope, not slope stabilization, stream bank stabilization, especially in areas where the waterway debris has come through. These are heavy-duty operations that require, you know, certain practice to be able to get in there and get this debris pulled out in a timely manner. So that's something we're talking to our partners with at FEMA about. We're making those requests that, you know, reseeding, restabilization, that's our goal, is to get some help through that, that process.
So here's a PPDR question for you. We've heard some questions about folks concerned about, you know, woody debris with forest fire concerns. I know the press has written about this a couple of different ways. Is the PPDR program the appropriate avenue that we have at this, in this moment to kind of address that? And I guess I'd ask it a different way. If I own five acres of woodlands, and my only concern about it is, is its forest fire potential, is calling and signing up for PPDR, is that an appropriate activity and use of that program?
Yes.
Okay.
Please call and sign up for PPDR. And that is something too, that we're working with FEMA on, making sure to clarify. Unmaintained, that's a word that's thrown around a lot, right? But with the hazards that are certainly in place for our, our communities with fire hazards, the fuel that's on the ground, those are certainly targets that we're wanting folks to apply with PPDR, absolutely.
Any other questions for Dane? All right, we really appreciate it. And I know the residents across the county are appreciating this work. And really, it does make a difference when you start to see the debris coming down, that we're headed toward recovery. Thanks, Dane.
Absolutely, thank you, Commissioner.
Next topic today is from FEMA. FEMA's going to give an update, and we have it us today, Deputy Coordinating Officer Benji Abbott. Benji?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. On behalf of Brett Howard, the federal coordinating officer, he is out of state today, but I'm his deputy, Benji Abbott. I want to thank you for allowing us to come and update you and continue to thank you for the, all the cooperation and support that's being provided as we get through this mission that we have. I have been asked to kind of brief a little bit on the individual assistance program or where we are. We just talked about debris, and I want to do the individual assistance program. But again, as the deputy coordinating officer, at the end, if I can, you know, answer any other questions, I'd be more than happy to do that before we get out. So for, as far as the individual... Maybe I'm not tech savvy. Okay, there we go. And I definitely can't see that. For the individual assistance side of the house, one of the biggest things I want to point out is that the original deadline for your disaster survivors to register for FEMA IAA assistance was March 8th. There was an extension that was put in place around that timeframe that has pushed the registration deadline now to April 7th for individual assistance. So survivors of Buncombe County still has till April 7th to register for FEMA assistance under IAA. Currently statewide, there's been 157,500 households that have received FEMA IAA assistance for a little over $400 million. But for Buncombe County alone, 59,639 households have received some form of assistance through the individual assistance program. So that's 37% of the entire disaster. And also for our IHP grant for housing repairs, home repairs, ONA, other things, 127 million has been awarded to Buncombe County survivors for that. Our transitional sheltering program, TSA, as we refer to, 13,000 applicants received temporary housing, and 484 households remain today in hotels. Of Buncombe County, 116 households still remain in our TSA program and in hotels, which is 24%. And of course, in 5,280 disaster survivor households at one time was in our transitional sheltering program. All right, thank you. For direct housing, currently today, there's been 223 applicants, households, as we refer, that's been given keys to some form of direct housing unit throughout western North Carolina. Of that, 80 households were Buncombe County residents that were licensed in, meaning we got them in, and they're, they're living in one of those units. And currently, 74 households from Buncombe County are licensed in with six who has already transitioned or vacated to a different living arrangement outside of FEMA. Rental assistance, 39,000, 3,914 households have received money for rental assistance, again, in Buncombe. 1,080 households, and for the total price of $3,662. So the great majority of that has been here in Buncombe County. As far as our private roads and bridge program under individual assistance, we received 6523 applications for that from, from different households. In Buncombe County alone, 1,658 of those have been requested. In Buncombe County, for their total repair or replacement to date, of those, 1,658 received, right at $5 million for repair or replacement of their private bridges.
So I just want to pause here real fast on the, on the private road bullets there. Can you just clarify, the 1,600 applicants, all of those applicants, all of their applications have been processed, and their road, the roads have been repaired in some way?
Not necessarily repaired. That has been applicants, that has requested. Not necessarily repaired. That has been applicants that has requested, that has registered for FEMA and identified private roads or bridge damage. Uh, not that they have all received funding to date.
Okay.
Uh, but they are potentially eligible, and we could be waiting on some additional contracting, some paper documents or something to continue the process. But they are in the process of being worked through the system, yes.
The sixteen hundred are the applicants, not necessarily funded, but some have been. And then the four point nine million is inclusive of, of whatever pot of money has been expended towards whatever quantity of applicants?
Yes.
Okay, I got you. I got you.
Today, uh, we still have eleven, uh, disaster recovery centers, as we call DRCs, in western North Carolina. Two are still here in Buncombe County, and that being the Fairview Public Library and Weaverville Town Hall. As, as you can see, a good amount of traffic comes in and out of those, uh, for, for various reasons, of not so much registration anymore, but for, you know, bringing in documents and, and continuing to get support and help throughout those. So, those will continue, uh, to be open for a, a few more weeks. And, and as we look, uh, for the short term, and we're in conversation with the state, uh, we won't close those, those facilities. We'll work with the locals and the states. The state has a longer-term plan to transition from a DRC, which is a short-term FEMA facility, to a, more of a long-term service center that's being run, uh, by the state and the locals will participate. But we will continue to maintain support from the FEMA side in those, uh, facilities as we move through. But there's a, at least a couple of more weeks for, uh, the DRCs will consider those transitions. Right? That's all I have for the individual assistance side. Are there any other questions or things I may answer for you before I step down?
I've got one more. Um, the hundred and sixteen Buncombe County residents you mentioned, that I believe you said are still in hotels?
Yes.
Is there any data or even anecdotal information you can give us about who those folks are and what their status is, what their situation is, what their future is?
That is, that is through the data sharing. Today, I couldn't tell you. We, we have the data, and I think we're sharing some of that with the state and maybe with the locals for the case management program. So, through the state's case management program, they are reaching out. Uh, so I will, I will make sure that, that the state is aware of that and our programs to, to kind of look into that for you.
I know we're all working together to get them out of that program.
Yes.
Into a stable situation, but it'd be helpful to know, kind of,
Yes.
What their future looks like.
Okay. Yeah, the state is doing, running their case management program along with us to kind of determine as we move forward.
Sure will.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update and the work.
Commissioner, that's a great question to ask the next group that's coming up. That's our disaster case management. Nathan Green and Lizzie Shimer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Nathan Green. I'm the, uh, Health and Social Services Recovery Support Function co-lead, and with me is, uh, Lizzie Shimer to, uh, give you an update on disaster case management coordination here in Buncombe County. Um, as of today, we have fifteen assigned case managers to Buncombe County. Um, we have four additional case managers coming in. Uh, they should be here this week. They're going through the second phase of, uh, their training, um, to augment the, um, case managers that are currently working. Um, since our kickoff meeting, which, uh, we defined roles and responsibilities, met with leadership and all of the disaster case managers, uh, about two weeks ago, we've, uh, established a meeting cadence. Uh, one of those is data, which informs our, uh, actions as we move forward, a strategic leadership, uh, group, which kind of, um, I guess gives direction. And then service delivery, which Lizzie, uh, heads up to, um, coordinate the services that the disaster case managers are, uh, delivering, such as, uh, TSA outreach and those sorts of things. Right now, we're partnering to determine that outreach. Uh, we've developed a heat map, which will, um, identify areas in the county that, um, aren't being reached as well as others. And so, we're focusing our efforts on getting our disaster case managers out there in a more convenient way for folks to have that face-to-face contact. Um, other ways is, uh, we're going to co-locate a couple of the disaster case managers in the FEMA, um, Disaster Recovery Center. That way, if they need to meet face-to-face or have any problems or anything they need to follow up with, they have someplace to go to get those done in a more convenient way, as well as reach out to other recovery resources that may be co-located, um, in the future. Um, but for now, I'll turn it over to, uh, Lizzie to give you a little more detail and the progress we've made so far.
Good afternoon. Um, this is the current status of the two thousand and fifty seven survivors who have applied for DCM from Buncombe County. They've really worked to ensure that every survivor who's applied, except for those coming in daily, have had at least one follow-up contact and been assigned to a case manager. They then move through the process of having a more in-depth needs assessment, and through that needs assessment, developing a recovery plan. The numbers will fluctuate of the assessment in progress to recovery plan as they complete the assessment. Um, we have a small number of folks who have completed their recovery plan. They likely had minimal needs, um, and were able to access those resources. Whenever they do the follow-up outreach, they, even before they get into the needs assessment, they are offering, if there's an immediate need or referral, they're putting them in connection with those services at that time. This is the level of the case complexity that we're seeing. They, this is a FEMA-funded, state-implemented program, so they're utilizing the tier system that FEMA has for being the highest level of complexity and priority. Tier one isn't noted here because we only have four people that qualify for it. It means that they really have completed their service or don't have a need. Um, the tiers can change. The information that we have for the applicants is a self-reported application. So, as they work through the needs assessment and developing their recovery plan, they will fluctuate in the level of tier and need for services that are being provided. Of the applicants that we currently have, this demonstrates the majority of them, pre-storm, were either homeowners or renters. We're also accounting for those who were in subsidized housing. And then other, which may, may have been residents who were living in tents or other non-structured shelters. This is the heat map that Nathan noted. So, we overlaid the intake addresses, um, with who has been applying to better identify areas that we know have been hard-hit and may have higher levels of need, as well as lack of access, um, to services. So, outside of co-locating at the DRC and some targeted events, we're also partnering out in communities like Arnardsville, Swannanoa, Bee Tree, Gerton, to sort of really, um, provide the direct one-on-one access for folks in those communities to enroll and get services.
Commissioner Sloan, did you want to ask your question?
Yeah, I guess I, just kind of ask my, ask my question again with, in regards to the folks, smaller number of folks than the last time we all talked about this together, which is, which is great. Um, just trying to wrap my head around who those people are, and if there's anything you can tell, you can tell us.
Specifically to the TSA numbers that you were referencing previously?
Yeah, I think what, what's stuck in my brain is these, these folks that, at this point in, in, in the calendar, still have no place to go. And I think about that a lot, and I'm, I'm just trying to figure out who they are and...
So, prior to even our level of involvement with DCM, the state was partnering with FEMA, and they, the DCM teams have a weekly rotating schedule that they are going out on-site to not just our hotels, but other regional hotels that have TSA residents. And they're doing that daily. Um, through that, they're offering connection with TSA, with the DCM program and connecting to other resources. Anecdotally, they're folks that literally have nowhere else to go. They likely had the most amount of damage to their homes. They are engaged in connecting with FEMA. If you go through the different levels of eligibility, whenever that changes, their connection to their case is part of that requirement, as they're, like, staying in connection with their, their IA program. And so, it's an assumption that the majority of people who are still living there likely had pretty significant damage and are also not in perhaps a rental or an RV or one of the other, um, housing options.
And it's important to note, what Lizzie just said is that there's gone, oh, every day, making sure they're meeting and connecting with those folks. So, if there are solutions to be had, this group is going to help them to get to those solutions.
Thank you. That's incredibly intense case management to follow up on a, on a daily basis with those folks. We really appreciate that you all have the ability to do that and that we're able to take care of our residents in that way. All right.
And our last topic is HMGP, the Hazard Mitigation Grant, and Brad Hughes is going to present that.
Good afternoon. As Ms. Pender alluded to, my name's Brad Hughes. I'm serving currently as the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Project Administrator. And updating you from our last HMGP briefing, uh, we submitted our first single project application to North Carolina Emergency Management on February 20th. Uh, this application included twenty three properties, seventeen of those residential, six of those commercial, um, all for acquisition. These properties are located within the town of Black Mountain, the city of Asheville, and the unincorporate, unincorporated areas of Buncombe County. As of the latest application data that we've received from North Carolina Emergency Management, we have a total of two hundred ninety nine HMGP applications across six application types. Um, six property owners in the NOAP section have addressed, uh, some questions with the state of emergency management, uh, but have not yet extended an application. Uh, so I want to indicate that. And this information reflects just over about a one percent increase, uh, since our last briefing. Additional applications were distributed at our Community Resource Fairs, and we anticipate this number to slightly increase as well. I'd be joining our inter-local agreements. Uh, Black Mountain approved their ILA at their town council meeting on March 10th. We Reveal is currently scheduled to review this at their town, uh, meeting this evening. And the city of Asheville is slated to review and vote on their ILA at their next county meeting, March 25th. Our internal HMGP team is working with CAPE to finalize a communication plan that will keep applicants informed of key milestones throughout this process. We are also coordinating with NCEM to determine what communications that they provide to our residents as well. Additionally, we have established a bi-weekly meeting between our HMGP team and an NCEM project manager to ensure ongoing collaboration and open communication between agencies. Lastly, we are awaiting NCEM's delivery of our next batch of HMDP, uh, properties for county review, uh, which will inform our next steps on our application process. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is funded based on a percentage of total disaster-related damages. For Hurricane Helene, this is one point five billion dollars in HMGP funding that has been allocated to North Carolina. HMGP is a competitive grant program, which means funding is not guaranteed and is awarded based on project eligibility, cost effectiveness, and community impact. While counties declared in the federal disaster declaration area receive priority consideration, eligible applicants from across the state may apply. This funding supports a wide range of mitigation activities designed to reduce, um, future disaster risks, and they are prioritized as follows. Our first priority is the acquisition, elevation, or mitigation reconstruction of residential properties. Priority two is the acquisition of commercial properties to eliminate exposure to high-risk, uh, hazard areas. Priority three is landslide stabilization and mitigation projects to protect the vulnerable, vulnerable areas and infrastructure. And then priority four will be government-led resilience initiatives that'll help us enhance disaster preparedness, strengthen our infrastructure, and reduce those long-term risks. Our team is proactively identifying potential mitigation projects that'll enhance resiliency under HMGP. Each project is carefully evaluated to ensure that it aligns with both community needs and program objectives to maximize its impact for the available funding. With selecting projects for our applications, we will prioritize the alignment with the comprehensive plan and our hazard mitigation plan. Uh, this will ensure that projects support our long-term strategies for reducing risk and also enhancing measurable disaster risk reduction and those long-term benefits. We'll also, um, address a county-wide approach, addressing vulnerabilities across the entire community, uh, to promote equitable and widespread resilience. So, by following this criteria, we can ensure that our HMGP funding is used effectively to build a stronger, safer, and more resilient community. I'll leave you with, uh, just a few examples. So, I want to remind you also that HMGP funding is used to support projects that will reduce future risk and make communities more resilient to disasters. Uh, so in addition to acquisitions and elevations, Buncombe County has utilized HMGP in the past, um, for projects such as, uh, implementing generator quick connects at several Buncombe County schools. So, what that does is allows for, um, us to hook up generators very quickly to, uh, provide services for, uh, essential functions in our, um, shelters, like lighting, heating, cooling, plugging up, uh, medical equipment, uh, so that, that can be, uh, quicker. And that ensures that those, uh, shelters are powered during emergencies to help mitigate, uh, potential impacts of such events. Uh, also, wildland urban interfaces. So, this project aims to reduce risk, risk of wildfires in areas, uh, where urban development meets those fostered or wildland areas. Uh, those mitigations can include fire breaks up to a hundred feet around homes, uh, so that is eligible through HMGP as well. Uh, enhanced mitigation planning, so we have a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. HMGP funds will, uh, help areas to create that hazard mitigation plan or update those hazard mitigation plans as necessary. Uh, several counties, uh, throughout North Carolina, including Rutherford County, Haywood County, Eastern Bay of Cherokee Indians, they've implemented, um, stream gauges and mass notification systems, so it allows us to tell when those water levels are rising quickly, and using those mass notification systems to let residents know there's an, you know, some kind of environment that you need to, to evacuate from, um, for, for life safety. Finally, flood mitigation and, uh, infrastructure resiliency. So, in the wake of devastating flooding in North Carolina, eastern North Carolina, HMGP funds were used, uh, to elevate roads and bridges in flood-prone, flood-prone areas, such as Craven and Lenore Counties. Uh, and also Chapel Hill, Hill and Durham have utilized HMGP funds for improvements to storm drainage, strengthening roads and infrastructure to withstand the heavy rainfall and flooding, et cetera. Are there any questions that I can attempt to answer for you all regarding HMGP?
I do have one. This, I'm getting this question from constituents that are considering this program, and they were asking about whether or not we could actually count on the funding coming to it. And you did mention one point five billion that was allocated to North Carolina. So, is that, that funding is already in place, definitely, for North Carolina?
So, from the notice of funding availability that the state sent out, uh, earlier, a few months ago, um, they had mentioned, quote, "an unprecedented" on our acquisition group that was submitted on the 20th of February. So, they're handling a lot of the project management part of that. Uh, and so they are, were kind of working at their, their plan. Right now, they're focused on acquisitions. Uh, so, that money is in, in play right now, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for confirming.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
I've got a couple of questions. Uh, I just wanted to clarify something, something you mentioned. Is it, am I correct in, in hearing you, there are other mountain communities from past allocations of these types of dollars that have installed, um, flood warning systems of some kind in other rivers and other counties? But is, is it, so that's true. Is, is it, is it true that there isn't anything like that in, in Buncombe County?
We have some stream gauges, however, several of those were damaged in Helene, and we'll need to work on getting those repaired. We'd like to look at the possibility of adding more as well in some of those areas that are more prone to flooding.
Okay. And you listed, uh, some examples of resilience projects, which is great to see. Um, helps me think about it more. Is there fine print from the state on what is kind of locked into eligibility, or is it something we apply for and kind of, is it back and forth?
There are eligibility rules that are in play in the... There are eligibility rules that are in play, and those do come into play here, absolutely. So things, cost-benefit analysis will come into play. There are a few other criterias that we can get those to you all specifically as to what those may be.
And just one example comes to mind is you mentioned, you know, bringing, enabling a building to bring a portable generator to it in an emergency, that sounds great. But another way to think about it would be to install a permanent generator or a permanent microgrid on a building. That's obviously more expensive, but more resilient. And so that's something that I would be thinking about.
Absolutely. And there's a specific, they call them 5% projects. So 5% of the total funding is set aside for those projects and stream, sorry, the generators are a part of that 5% project as well.
Okay.
Would wetland protection and revitalization fall within that resiliency bucket? Is that something the state's doing or looking at?
It's, it, go ahead, Ms. Pender.
For wetland mitigate, wetland protection, mitigate, mitigating threats to wetlands or restoring wetlands, obviously. Yeah, yeah, or installing wetlands. Obviously, our wetlands do, play a critical role in absorbing flood surge, so I'm curious if that fits within that bucket.
I'll take that information back and find out. I do know that once we, you know, if we acquire that property, that has to return to green space. So that may be something that fits that green space initiative, but I'd have to verify that.
Okay. And then one more question. The buckets of priorities that, as we move down, with current levels of funding, do we think we'll be able to get even into that third, fourth bucket or with existing funds that are available? Or are we going to just even have enough to take care of the current applications for mitigation?
So we are looking at all projects right now as the HMGP staff to see what, you know, what our interests lie for the county, and we're going ahead and applying for those regardless. Again, in the NOFA, the Notice of Funding Availability, it was quoted an unprecedented amount of money. Of course, there's unprecedented amount of damage as well. So we're, we're fighting for as much as we can to place that into the application and see where the state lies and what we're actually funded.
Thanks for your work.
Yes, sir.
Can you share some examples? Looks like there's 164 applications for acquisition in unincorporated Buncombe. You share examples of what that could potentially look like. Would that mean that those people could choose to leave the county to rebuild, rebuild elsewhere? What, what does that look like?
And that was in terms of acquisitions?
Acquisitions in unincorporated.
So the acquisitions, it's really up to the property owner. Again, this is a, an optional program, so we can't go and say, hey, we think that you should do this. It's up to the residents, say, you know, it's voluntary and I volunteer to do this. So it's really up to the residents, say, hey, I want to stay in Buncombe County or I don't. They're very specific, you know, once we do choose to acquire that property, there are those specific uses at that point. So it's really up to the resident.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to really call attention that we, those people could potentially be leaving us.
Well, not just leaving us, but then the land becomes open space.
Exactly, yes.
And there's some restricted uses of what we do to that land after they get on out.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right. Thank you for your work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's the last from Helena.
That is the last, and I do believe that the end of the presentation is our appendix that does include a lot of data. We appreciate everyone who puts that together for us. Thank you. Our next agenda item, Affordable Housing Service Subcommittee revisions, and Jonathan Jones and Kurt Uller are joining us. Kurt, you're on the agenda. Just reading what's in front of me. Jonathan, thanks for joining us.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jonathan Jones with the Community Development Division with a couple of updates from the Affordable Housing Committee. So the first item is a potential expansion of the Affordable Housing Committee, taking a look back to February 2019. That is when the board created the Affordable Housing Committee as a subcommittee with three members, as commissioners as the three members. The purpose of the committee is to engage with community partners, solicit public input, and make housing affordability policy and funding recommendations to the board. So with that in mind, at the March 4th meeting, the committee made the recommendation to expand its membership to not only include three commissioners, but also two residents. This would shift the structure of the committee as a subcommittee to more of an advisory role. Within, as noted on the slide, when the board was, when the board created the committee, it was not done as a resolution, and therefore, the authorities that were granted to the committee were recorded in the affordable or granted through the Affordable Housing Service Program. So the shift to make, to expand the committee membership would also include deferring some of those decision-making authorities to the board, some financial considerations like award amounts, interest rates on loans, and the deferral of loan payments. So the next steps in that process and considering the expansion of the committee would be to, for the board to consider a resolution initiating the creation of a charter for the committee that would come before you in April. And then later in May, consideration of that charter, additions to the bylaws, and amendments to the Affordable Housing Service Program to reflect those changes as an expanded committee. Any questions?
So this came about as we were bringing brand-new Commissioner Ball to joining us. We had to dig in and make some changes to the bylaws because when we formed this in 20, early 2019, it was very clear that we wanted a commissioner representing each district. And as the district lines have continued to change every two years, that really didn't make sense any longer to be bound to those districts because who knows what they're going to look like in two more years. And so it did give us the opportunity then, after Commissioner Ball joined, Commissioner Sloan and I, on affordable housing, to look at any additional changes that we wanted to make to the bylaws. So that gives you a little overview of how we got to this point today.
To be able to add on, you know, something that was in my head is, you know, as evident by the quantity of planning board members, applicants we have, there's huge interest in the community in getting involved, which is fantastic. And we can just use all the, all the help we can get in terms of diving in on the topic of housing. We have a lot to rebuild, and our staff are working hard. We could all use more eyes and more help. In terms of like the who, as we think, as we all, assuming we agree with this idea, I'm getting ahead of myself, assuming we all agree with this, this plan, this idea, in terms of who I think about kind of adding to this. For those of you that remember, the Bond Oversight Committee, those are the types of people I think about in the back of my head of like, who might be good for this kind of thing. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be folks from nonprofits or the development world where we give money to these folks that would end up on the committee. Not those types of folks is not who I'm thinking of, but that's, that's kind of where my, my head is at the moment.
No, I think that's a great point, and who knows, we may have some folks from the planning committee applicants that would also make really excellent members of this. I will say one thing that has really struck me as we've looked through this is setting a precedence that, you know, it really had been the three commissioners who were making the funding decisions, and then we were just bringing them to the full board to sign off on. This does allow the full board of commissioners to be more engaged in that decision-making process. And I think for transparency, particularly with bond funds, this is a good time to make, make this a more open process for all of us to be engaged in. And could be potential model for how some of our other committees are operated. And I am so sorry, Commissioner Ball, I think I cut you off.
Oh, no, you did not. I was just going to add that I think we all know, as we hear from constituents, housing affordability is one of the biggest issues that people care about, and it's only going to be an issue that continues to dominate discussions and grow. And with full faith in small D democracy, bringing additional perspectives, additional expertise onto that subcommittee, we feel could be very helpful, but also allow us to go deeper into the community as we seek ideas and also project out new information that's coming out of the committee. So we just think having additional hands on deck and additional support and additional perspectives would be really useful.
Are there any questions? Jonathan said this will be coming back before us. All right. Thank you all.
I guess.
Rest of the committee, this has been a good, a good opportunity to make some changes.
I guess the only thing I would ask the board is if you all have any guidance, because we would be coming up with a proposed resolution for sort of the structure of this committee or more or less kind of the guidelines, because it was pretty much just created based on emotion. So if there is anything that you all specifically would want to see, please let us know so we can make sure that we include that. We're going to structure it like we would any other committee that we have. We're basically that committee, the board will be responsible for making the appointments to the committee, and then the committee itself will then be able to adopt its own bylaws, rules, and regulations to the extent that they don't conflict with the enabling resolution.
So what specific guidance would you be looking for as far as that's concerned?
Well, I would just say that the applicants would, would be the normal applicant process for people that want to be on this committee would be, would file with the clerk, and then the clerk would bring those to you, just like any other board appointment that you would make. I do not believe that there would be any special powers of this committee or board at this point in time. So I don't have anything specific, but then again, I don't know if there's anything that you all may be looking for.
And you're looking for just, not just the structure of, of the committee, but also, because right now, we, as a, as a committee of only elected officials, we make kind of,
Well, that, that was the one thing I think that, that staff had some concern is in the advisory committee or in the Affordable Housing Committee guidelines, that committee has the authority to do, like to defer loan payments and things like that. If you are adding two additional community members, it's possible that you could have unelected officials making funding decisions, and we didn't think that would be a good idea. So that, that would be something that we would need to have changed because it's quite possible that you could have a quorum of three where you have two non-elected officials and a commissioner. And so we just want to make sure that those decisions, I think, would be, and I want to make sure that's the case, those decisions would be coming back to the full board.
Yes. And I may not have been clear when I said that coming back to the full board, that would be the example of those decisions coming back to the seven of us. So that, you know, if Commissioner Sloan were the only elected at the table at that day with two non-elected serving, that the decision would ultimately be in the hands of the commissioners. Thanks, Kurt.
Sure.
So Kurt, could I ask just for my own edification for future boards? It sounds like that would function roughly the same way many of our boards would, JCPC being an example. Here is a proposed budget for this year. Land's before commission, commission votes to adopt or not. Realistically, we're probably going to, but covers your basis for what you're asking for legally right now.
Right. I think the difference is that some of boards and advisory committees and things, things like that may be created by state statutes. So the state statute will give you certain guidance. However, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 153A77, it also allows the commissioners to create its own boards or committees and doesn't really give a ton of guidelines. But I think that you would definitely want to be able to tell how many people are on the board, who appoints the board members, what happens if somebody leaves, you know, more or less kind of the, the organizing principles of this committee. And then we would then have operational bylaws. Does that, does that answer your question?
It does. It just sounds like the three planning board members, I'll defer to y'all and what that looks like, but just tracking what the state statute normally does, just using county ordinance language.
Sure.
I guess my only other two cents I can think of in this topic is like, I think for the environment committee, the committee itself interviewed the other people. So that's something, maybe we all want to interview all these people. I don't know. I guess I would be willing as a member of the Affordable Housing Committee to do the interviews up to you guys. I don't know. That's not, that's a thing we could do. And I guess the other question that comes to mind is, or just thought is, yeah, obviously when it comes to the powers of the purse and spending money, I think that has, I don't think that's even up to us. It has to come back to this full board, right? So.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah. So that's kind of off the table.
No, and I think you brought a good point, though, about the interviews, because our, our tradition has been to interview boards who are making funding recommendations on our behalf. So I think to follow along with what our precedence has been, that we would want to interview the candidates to fill those two positions because they are, like, being, they're part of the funding recommendation process.
And we would be happy to look and see, and I, and I haven't done this, but if there are any other boards that, that we could look and see whether there was an actual resolution passed or whether it was just done by a motion. And then we could kind of give you an idea as to where each board sits. And then if you wanted to kind of use this enabling resolution for these committees, then you could kind of use that as a template.
I think that'd be great.
Sounds great. I saw Sarah's face as you said that, so you might have an angry clerk at you.
There, there may, well, there wasn't, I mean, this was done by a motion. So the Affordable Housing Committee was done by a motion, and I did not specifically look for the Environmental Health Committee, and I'm, and so we'll look and let you know how some of these other advisory committees were formed.
If that's the case, can I just, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, can I just go ahead and propose that we pick a day, we can do this one first because it's right in front of us, but just two commission meetings from now, add this to our board's update section of our agenda and adopt them en masse rather than trickling it out over the next six months?
I will be happy to get that and.
So I will make a point there that you were saying two meetings from now, that's gonna need about a month. I'd like to make sure we have the time to do the research and give you a date while we can bring it back, but.
Whatever date is convenient for staff.
At some point in the future, but not too distant future.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thanks for the great discussion. Does that help give some additional direction, Kurt?
Done.
Okay. And I think you still have some additional things to go over with us.
We have one, one more item. So this would be a, an amendment to the Affordable Housing Service Program to address the impacts of Hurricane Helene, specific to the emergency repair program and allow some flexibility within that program. Currently, the emergency repair program limit is set at $25,000 per unit, per household repaired, or per home repaired. And the repairs at or exceeding $15,000 must be secured by a forgivable loan. In response to a request from some of the providers doing those repairs out in the community, the committee made a recommendation to increase the maximum assistance from $25,000 to $50,000 per unit on homes that had damages from Helene, and to also structure that assistance in the form of a grant, so no longer requiring it to be secured by a lien. And so we're bringing this to you to bring it to your attention and consideration, and then would bring it back in April as a potential change to the Affordable Housing Service Program. Part of that consideration could be structured sort of twofold. One would be to look at the maximum assistance by itself, changing the limit from $25,000 to $50,000, specifically where the home is damaged by the storm. And then the second part would be to consider the structure of that assistance with a couple of options. The first would again be to structure it as a grant so that there's not a forgivable loan required. That's consistent with the committee's recommendation. The other would be to maintain the current lien limit or lien restriction at $15,000, or to establish a different threshold. So for example, if you were to increase the maximum amount per household to $50,000, you might also increase that lien requirement to $25,000 when that's applicable. One thing I do want to point out is that any of the changes considered would be specific to households that had impact from the storm, the standard lien. from the storm. The standard lien limits and program maximums would apply for all other health and safety repairs that are being conducted. And so any of the work done under a change would impact how the contract is structured and the work performed so that the providers would also be looking at the estimates of cost for the damages from Helene and verifying that the, that there weren't other resources available that would have already addressed that need. Sort of ensuring that there's not a duplication of benefits.
All right.
So with that, I.
Jonathan, thank you. I do want to say to you all that I do know the committee made this recommendation for a grant for me upon further review and reflection of this. I've, I had, I'm shifting a little bit in where I'm personally landing on this and I know this is going to come back to us for, for a final approval. I'm struggling on two, on two pieces of this, y'all, that it is a grant, not a loan. And with there not being a lien on the property, it would not, I'm not saying people would do this, but it wouldn't prevent someone from taking the $50,000 for a repair and immediately turning around and selling the home for a higher cost, let's say. Nothing that would be affordable at that point. I'm leaning towards being more consistent with our current policies and procedures in place with the existing AHSP rules, which would be a forgivable loan, but would require a lien on, on the property to ensure that folks are, are staying in the homes that these dollars are being used to repair.
Thank you, because you've answered the question that I was going to ask. That's a concern I.
I didn't even tee that up.
Yeah, that's a concern I have that could easily happen.
Can you speak more to, since I'm not on the Affordable Housing Committee, can you speak to more to why you do have that forgivable loan requirement typically?
Yeah, Jonathan, I'm going to turn to, to our staff to better explain that than I think we can today.
So the forgivable loan is structured so that within the first year, $15,000 would be forgiven and then 5,000 incrementally after that. And so the goal would be to sort of incentivize a household to remain in their affordable unit and get the benefit of those repairs after they've been invested in.
Thank you for better explaining that than I could have.
So I'm just teasing this through in my mind because I'm wrapping my mind around it. I hear what you're saying is a concern and I'm all about liens in the wild world. But so this is 15,000 for the first year and then 5,000 every year thereafter. If you adopted the first portion of it, that could be up to $50,000. Is that right? So that might in theory encumber your house for like a solid seven, eight years.
I think we could change that.
You could change considerations.
Yeah, we can change that.
Because I have no issue with like, I do want to alleviate that concern that you raised that someone flipping a house. I also don't want to like add an additional concern for someone who's facing financial difficulties.
I would be one of the considerations for adjusting those levels and could be specific to households affected by.
Just as a teaser, I know Kurt probably has some stuff in mind, but a bad faith provision in anything you do might be helpful as well because that can catch anything that falls through the cracks.
Good point.
I don't suppose anybody off the top of their head knows fine print around the, I guess NC Commerce's home repair program that exists. Try to copy theirs. I don't know. It is kind of a different circumstance though.
It's a little different.
I, I think the idea would be is that we set out what, you know, in order to, to, for the loan forgiveness, we set out certain things that you have to do where, you know, obviously you, you know, you're 80% AMI, you, you maintain certain things and you're able to do that. We do that with some of our other loans. So, so it's, and normally a person, not only will they sign a promissory note, a deed of trust, they also sign a loan agreement with, between the borrower and the county and we explain all that. So we try to make sure that everything's as upfront as possible. But obviously sometimes people may sell their house prior to the loan expiring and they sell it to somebody that's not, you know, 80% AMI and then they would have to pay off the lien at that time.
They would only pay off the balance of the lien, right?
Yeah, the balance of the lien that hadn't been forgiven. I'm sorry. Thank you, Emma.
Because the Affordable Housing Committee is three commissioners, we couldn't have conversations about this beforehand. So I apologize to my colleagues on the committee that we were not able to discuss this, which was also part of why we wanted to expand the committee. We cannot meet outside of those committee meetings. So I apologize that I couldn't share that until today. All right. Any further questions, comments? You feel good about what direction we've provided, Jonathan?
Thank you very much.
Let me tell you all, we have an incredible team working on affordable housing with Jonathan, Jake, Matt, Matt. The whole crew are great to listen and try to figure out what we're telling them to do and then bringing back great recommendations. So we are incredibly lucky. Thank you so much, Jonathan. Appreciate it. And I hope I didn't leave anyone out. Thank you all for the great discussion. I appreciate it. All right. Kathleen Blackney is joining us with a strategic plan 2023 and Helene Recovery Plan update. I do, while she's walking up here, want to tell you, she spoke to the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors just a couple of weeks ago. And she absolutely represented us so well in front of that board. She crushed it. So we're excited to have you here today and representing us in the community as you speak about these issues. Thanks, Kathleen.
Well, thank you, Chair Edwards and Commissioners. As was shared, I'm here today to discuss the current state of our 2030 strategic planning process as well as introduce a new planning process relevant to Buncombe County as a community in recovery from a natural disaster. To begin, I want to start with a little bit of an overview of the 2030 strategic plan and the process to date. The plan in general, important to know that this is the North Star for all of Buncombe County programs, departments, operations. As such, we make sure that it aligns with the 2043 Comprehensive Plan, which sets a direction for 20 years of operations. With the Strategic Plan as sort of our mile marker for that five-year sprint within the 20-year Comprehensive Plan as well as informing budgetary decision-making prioritization processes over the five-year lifespan of the plan. It helps us understand goals, objectives, priorities for all county programs. And for the 2030 Strategic Plan, we're really committed to ensuring that if all the goals in the plan are measurable and that they are bound by data that we know that we have access to. So that on day one of this plan, we will be able to understand where we started and progress towards the goals laid out in that plan. So it's a little bit of a background on the plan. At the point the tropical storm Helene impacted our community in September, the Board of Commissioners at that time had endorsed this structure for the Strategic Plan with seven focus areas. Community health, economic development, education, energy and the environment, growth and development and public safety, as well as a foundational focus area focused on county operations, making sure that the county as an employer and a service provider is optimizing our performance, meeting our excellent standards. Within this structure, we are also planning on ensuring that we had two to three objectives per focus area. These objectives are directional aspirations, sort of serving as a bridge between the general focus area, a topic as broad as community health, for example, and two to three specific SMART goals underneath each objective. That's where that measurable point I mentioned earlier really comes back in. Making sure that for any objective, we have two to three goals that are bound by specific and measurable targets that cumulatively comprehensively help us understand how we're moving in the direction laid out in that objective. As I mentioned earlier, we were well into the planning process of developing the 2030 Strategic Plan in September and have put that planning process on pause as an impact of tropical storm Helene. You can see here the activities that were completed up to that point in that process, starting all the way back in April of 2024 through September with a goal of adoption in November of 2024. So we were very close to crossing the finish line on this planning process. A different way to look at the work completed and what was left to get over that last little bit to the edge of the finish line is that you can see we had conducted multiple rounds of community engagement ranging from everything from virtual online surveys to in-person meetings, multiple sort of mobile events where we would be available to take feedback, share surveys, gather information at pre-existing community events. We had taken our draft plan, gotten community feedback on that. We'd also engaged our internal subject matter experts in a several series of meetings from May through August of 2024 to help to take what we were hearing from the community and use that to develop some draft objectives, goals, really draft content for the plan, which then led into our Board of Commissioner engagement, one of our multiple rounds of Commissioner engagement, which included early feedback surveys, understanding priorities from our commissioners, reviewing that engagement that we heard from the community and our internal subject matter experts, as well as a retreat as recently as August of 2024, where we were able to take all of that input and develop draft objectives and goals within each of those focus areas, especially the six community-facing focus areas that I reviewed earlier. So as you can see here, that leaves us with really just three elements of the original planning process remaining at the point that tropical storm Helene impacted our community to review that community feedback on the draft goals and objectives, finalize it with the Board of Commissioners based on that feedback, update anything that needed to be tweaked. Really, really, especially what was left to finalize. We had, again, those focus areas, our objectives were very close to full consensus. What was really left was coming to final decisions on the targets for those SMART goals. Remember I said they were all going to be measurable? And the sort of timeline, that they are time-bound SMART goals, that we know how we're measuring them, what do we expect to achieve and by when? Those were the key elements that were remaining to be finalized, which would have brought us to that last step of adopting the 2030 Strategic Plan. Again, with the original goal of doing that in November of last year. So that's some content, some background on where, what has been completed with the 2030 Strategic Planning Process, where we left things at the point of tropical storm Helene. Want to dive into a little bit of context about this additional planning process of the tropical storm Helene Recovery Plan and then come back to the Strategic Plan and discuss some options and a proposal for how we can complete both of these plans together. So background context, what is a recovery plan? It's a little bit different than the strategic planning process we've just been reviewing. Key thing here is that it is intended to guide the community to rebuild and recover after a major disaster. It assesses impacts and needs based on that disaster, names what is, is important to accomplish for recovery, reflects community voice, but also is tailored to organizational scope. So this is the Buncombe County Recovery Plan, right? What are, what can we accomplish? What are we responsible for accomplishing? And it aligns to existing plans. Going to talk a lot about alignment with the Strategic Plan today, provide some other examples of opportunities for alignment with the Comprehensive Plan. We know that we have multiple plans, including Parks and Rec, Transportation, Help. This doesn't have to be a replacement or a contradiction. We really hope that this will leverage that existing work. A good plan is important because it helps us to secure funding. It also helps coordinate efforts between different organizations and government agencies, prioritizes needs so that the most critical issues get addressed first, supports businesses and residents in rebuilding their lives and helps us build back stronger to reduce damage from future disasters. So that's sort of the 500-foot view of a recovery plan. Key, key thing when we think about a strategic plan and a recovery plan, when it comes to some of the nuances between them, is that strategic plan is really, again, it's that North Star, right? It's setting the direction guided by vision, mission and values. Whereas this recovery plan is much more of a tactical document. It is focused on projects that the county will endorse and plan to complete in order to repair damage from the storm, enhance our resiliency and reduce vulnerability to future disasters. So some potential examples of what we think that might look like in project form for the tropical storm Helene Recovery Plan would be the creation of a small area plan for unincorporated Swanonoa to guide land use, zoning, infrastructure, transportation, design and community development. This is actually an example of that Comprehensive Plan alignment that I mentioned earlier. This type of small area plan has been in our Comprehensive Plan since 2023. This is leveraging that work to say, okay, we need to expedite that goal. This is a new type of priority now. So something like that might get into the recovery plan as an example of alignment. We could also see a potential project around construction of a housing development on county-owned property based around area median income. Redevelopment of a county park that was extensively damaged by the storm. We know there's multiple examples of that. Again, alignment. We know that we have a Parks and Rec master plan, right? So we'll, can think about what did the storm make us need and where are our parks projects anyway? And then activating property acquired through the Hazard Mitigation Buyout Program. We just heard a lot about potential projects from that in the previous presentation. So again, key thing in giving these examples is to understand that this is the type of work we expect to see in the Helene Recovery Plan. How are we going to get there? We have a draft strategic plan as well as this new priority and opportunity to develop a recovery plan. We have a proposed approach for this. Essentially, key step is to update the 2030 Strategic Plan to reflect evolving, emerging, shifting priorities as a community in recovery. I talked about the extensive community engagement we did last year. We want to make sure that we give our community a chance to check back in, update us. Is this still accurate? What is even more important? What might be on the back burner? What is a new priority you could have never imagined when we spoke to you in 2024? We also propose establishing a recovery plan that delivers a set of priorities aligned to the objective and goals of the Strategic Plan. So again, that recovery plan is really project-based because we can leverage existing vision, goals, objectives from the Strategic Plan. We know that North Star, that direction the county wants to head over the next five years, that will bound and be that North Star for the long-term recovery plan projects as well. We hope to align these planning timelines with a tentative proposed idea of adopting both these plans in September of 2025. And one of the key things we mean by aligning the planning timelines is to use a unified engagement plan. So the idea is that we can go and ask the community, what do you need as a community in recovery? What is important to you today? And that can inform both of these documents. And then again, we do hope that through long-term recovery planning, it will help with alignment with our municipal partners. So we propose coordinating with the City of Asheville and towns for aligned planning processes where feasible. I think you all know tropical storm Helene didn't really care where the county line is versus Woodfin, Weaverville, City of Asheville. As much as possible, we hope that our planning process will reflect that reality as well. So just sort of a more specific example of this strategic alignment, what we think this could look like. The strategic plan example here is actually pulled from the draft strategic plan where we left it last September. That focus area, growth and development, we had an objective around encouraging many different types of housing for our community with that SMART goal, again, being measurable, the unit creation of a specific number of housing units. Once again, I mentioned those measures were one of the, excuse me, the targets were one of the last things we had to complete. So that number, number, number in there is intentional, is to be determined. What might that look like in the recovery plan? A project around developing more affordable housing with a call out specifically to how does this project support a goal or objective within the strategic plan? So that's sort of the general vision, broad overview of these two planning processes. Where do they align? What is distinct? Why is it worth doing to distinct plans? And this is. And this is the proposed timeline for how we might be able to implement that unified approach. Starting in the spring, we will confirm our planning processes, scope, partners, get this timeline a little more concrete and hope to launch our first round of community engagement, going back for that input that I mentioned. What is new? What is different? What do we need to know now that you couldn't have told us previously prior to, to being a community in recovery? We'll begin developing project ideas, collect information about potential funding sources. And this spring would hope to have our initial working session with the board to begin diving into some of the content, the specifics about these plans. In the summer, we would roll into taking those projects, ideas and refining them into specific project proposals with much more of that tactical information ready to share and develop. We would then go back to the community for a second round of engagement, now looking for feedback. Okay, here's what we heard in the spring. Does this project meet that need? Does this strategic plan goal address the changes you were telling us you see? Use all of that to refine our goals and targets, continue refining the plans. At that point, go back to our subject matter experts that we worked with for strategic planning process, get their feedback as well and then conduct another work session with the board, which we would use to refine those drafts into a final plan in the fall and hopefully be able to adopt both of those plans in the fall of 2025 as well. One final thing I ought to have stated earlier when discussing the draft 2030 strategic plan, right after these slides, there is an appendix in this deck that includes each focus area with the corresponding objectives and draft goals as we left them last September. So at the end of this slide deck, that specific information of where was that draft at that time can be found. So any questions I can answer?
Kathleen, thanks for this plan. I, I'm excited to see how we can take our strategic planning efforts and tie them directly to recovery. I mean, as we know, we have a number of years ahead of us in terms of what our recovery path looks like and being able to figure out how we can still address some of the goals within our strategic plan that we had started the work on and utilize those to, as an impetus to recovery, I think is really exciting to see, to see how those mesh and merge together. So thank you for your work on that and I will see if anyone has any questions or thoughts.
I have one question specifically to your slide. Had examples of recovery projects and a Swannanoa small area plan. I think that same sentence exists in the budget slide deck this Thursday as well. So I don't know if I should say this now or then, but maybe I'll, maybe I'll do both, you know? I was, I was supportive of the Swannanoa small area plan before the hurricane and I am today certainly. But I guess what I'm not supportive of is making that a prerequisite to us applying for funding for projects that help rebuild Swannanoa. I, I think we have to move forward with whatever that looks like, with whatever funding we can find before that, that plan takes place. That's not ideal. I have a degree in planning and very much in favor of, of planning things. That's, that's how things are, that's how money is best spent typically. But we can't tell those, in my opinion, I don't think we can tell those people that they have to wait for yet another thing. We've already told them they have to wait on our crumbling federal government to get its act together and give us the money that Congress approved back in December. You know, the state hasn't taken recovery funding seriously until right now, really, arguably. That money isn't anywhere near Buncombe County. We can't tell these people that they have to wait for yet another thing. So that's, that's my two cents.
I just wanted, oh, did you want to reply?
Well, thank you for naming that, Commissioner Sloan. I'll just name that we've reviewed this idea and talked about coordination with the long-term planning team working on that plan and they feel confident that these processes can move forward in coordination, not, not as a barrier to that process.
This proposed approach sounds good to me and I also appreciate you looking at coordinating with our municipalities as much as we can in this. So thanks for calling that out as well. And then my only question is maybe the, just looking over the, I think it was in the appendants there, we, we had a meeting and discussed, we had a pretty intense meeting or thorough meeting, I should say, and discussed a lot of these and did provide feedback. And so I'm guessing you still have that feedback on these specific objectives that you'll be able to incorporate? Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I'll just note, I'm, I'm glad to see this moving forward again. I think with resilience in mind, things like involvement with community rating system, which is, you know, how we as a community plan for and, and try and become more resilient in the face of flooding. It's a voluntary program with FEMA and it not only protects life and property, but it also lowers our insurance rates for flood, flood, flood insurance rates. So I'm glad that this process is moving forward and hopefully that's one of many things we can add to that because I believe it's already in our conference of plans, so.
Anything else? All right. Sounds great. Thank you so much, Kathleen. We appreciate you joining us and for your work. All right, Commissioners, are there any other items, earning items you need to discuss? We need to discuss before five o'clock? Hearing none, we will adjourn this meeting and reconvene at five o'clock. Thanks, everyone. We're adjourned.